It was a mess, but it screwed up.
That's the shortest.
All right, folks, we are going to get started here. All right, this is Commission President, oh, excuse me. There we go. This is Commission President Sam Chil. I haven't been doing that for the past couple of weeks. Uh, convening the special meeting of October tenth, twenty twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Wow, I'm tired. Uh, the time is nine oh seven AM. We're meeting in person today at the Port of Seattle headquarters building, Commission Chambers and, and virtually via Microsoft Teams call-in line. Present with me today are Commissioners Calkins, Fellman, and Mohammed. Commissioner Hazagaw is expected to join us shortly. We are meeting today to conduct a study session regarding the twenty twenty-four Aviation Division Operating and Capital Budgets. Before we go into the representation, Executive Director Metrick, do you have any opening comments you would like to make at this time?
Yes, good morning Commissioners. Commissioners, this study session marks the third time so far this year that we focused on budget issues outside the regular public commission meeting schedule. So I want to thank you by, thank you for taking so much time out of your schedules to work toward the completion of final passage of our, the port's twenty twenty-four budget. At your last commission meeting, you heard a briefing on the twenty twenty-four Central Services preliminary budget as well as a, a port-wide bu- roll-up briefing, port-wide budget roll-up briefing. This morning, we'll focus on the aviation budget, and then you'll hear a presentation on the draft Maritime and Economic Development Division budgets during your regular meeting this afternoon. Uh, I think, uh, you're making good progress on your CPA and your financial management qualifications going forward. That's a lot of time today, and I really appreciate that focused on this. Of course, the reason that we take extra time to focus on the aviation budget is its size and complexity. The airport is approximately three-quarters of the port's revenues, and almost all of its funding and activities are governed by strict regulation and oversight. For example, under FAA rules, dollars generated at the airport must stay at the airport, other than costs paid to central services for support services, so, so that the airport's revenues and expenditures are truly a standalone part of our overall budget. Let me start with the good news. We project that air travel will fully recover next year, and that both passenger numbers and revenues will exceed twenty nineteen levels. Now for the more challenging news, we project that the air traveler will fully recover next year, and that the passenger number will exceed twenty nineteen levels. So this is obviously, uh, the best of times and the, and harder times. I'm obviously speaking tongue-in-cheek, but as you know, uh, well, then our airport is stretched to accommodate this level of demand within our constrained facilities, especially because of the significant instruction taking place over the next few years to create the kind of facilities and customer experience that we want to offer our travelers. So we have to build as we're, as we're operating. The airport's capital program is going to be a major theme for today's presentation, including its key objectives and an overall overview of the major projects and programs. Delivering the capital program will be an incredible challenge, but also an amazing opportunity to upgrade SEA into a world-class facility, uh, we all want it to be. Second, you'll hear a lot of discussion about the ways in which the proposed aviation budget is focused on achieving many other goals beyond customer experience, including environmental sustainability, equity, and just as importantly, taking care of our workforce and ensuring strong recruitment and retention of our staff. I believe you'll find that today's presentation is fully aligned with our mission, values, and goals. Before I turn things over to Lance and his team to walk us through today's presentation, uh, Managing Director Lance Little from Aviation, I want to give a special acknowledgement to Heidi Popchak, who is, uh, who is going to through this process for the very first time. And, uh, she's done a fantastic job, and kudos to her and her team in Aviation Finance for their exceptional work so far. So with that, I look forward to today's conversation, and with that, I'll now turn it over to Managing Director, Managing Director of Aviation Lance Little, who will kick us off. Lance?
Lance, before we get started, real quick, I think, uh, Commissioner Fellman had a quick, uh, question.
I greatly appreciate Lance's remote, I take it?
Yeah.
Thank you. The, um, I, I thought Steve was going to go through a little bit of the, just the, more of the generic strategic budget process, which are the next three pages before Lance got into it, but, uh, just, you know, in going through the discussion that we're going to have today, I, I'm just interested to see how, if you look at the next, you know, the second page into this discussion, we have just the broad century agenda drives division plans and budgets, which is, Steve, what I thought you were going to go through. And, um, and, but the, you know, the thing that I don't see here, where we have, just if you look at the third bucket down, executive director priorities, we have the annual priorities identified by the ELT and approved by the ED. At no place do I see commission priorities integrated into the first three goals. I mean, it just strikes me that the process that we normally go through is Commissioners, you know, we have a process by which commission input is done, but it's, it's not even recognized, as I can see it, in the development of the strategic agenda for the plan. And I just think that it's important, because when we come up to then discussions of what the KPIs are, these should reflect a integration of commission priorities. And I don't really understand, um, you know, we have to going through this, you know, what a budget amendment process might look like. And then, you know, when we talk about, and I'll get into that one, once Lance gets going, but, you know, there are questions I have about, you know, the setting of the KPIs, but also the tools that we use to measure. And, and the question I always have is the question about why is Skytrucks and JD Power so different? But we, with that was something much more detailed to get into, but perhaps you can just show me how you see, and, and I think this has been a fluid process, that's why I'm asking for it to be better defined.
Well, I think we set up the process and, you know, rather than going through, there is a, we've discussed this before, when we amended the century agenda before, we set up this process where that's where the, um, the high-level guidance comes in, and then, and then we break it down into those, uh, into the business planning that accomplishes towards those century agenda goals. And specifically, I mean, uh, you know, those are in alignment with those, and that's why the, the, the staff develops those. So I don't think those are different, the, the commission priorities come in as the direction, as the North Star that we're driving towards in order to do that. Uh, I don't know if there's, you know, sometimes, well, annually, we get some specific things, uh, budget priorities for Commissioners that, uh, Commissioners are interested in, but in normal, we're in total alignment on driving towards those larger goals. And so that's how we envision this, the process is set up to do that, not on the, not on the annual goals, not for the commission to have annual goals for us to drive towards, that they would be more on the, on the strategic goals that we're trying to achieve within that.
Well, as is always stated, that the budget is the moral document, and that while the century agenda goals are so broad, they're kind of hearty, and their goals are set, but the agenda objectives would be still within the five-year priorities, where I think commission input on the five-year priorities makes sense. But in any given year, and I think Lance does a good job in calling out some of the commission priorities that are in there specifically, but I, I just think that if we're talking about how a commission, how a port-wide budget is generated, I would like to see described here that commission input is directly integrated. And, and I really do believe that, you know, this is why we're going through this process. We have, you know, exhaustive budget discussions on each division, and I think, you know, whether it be the Tony Report or whatever, here to refer to as, um, that I, I just think it's missing. So, thank you for.
Thanks for your comments. Let it, you know, herefore, that it's called the Tony Report. Lance, take it away.
Yeah, so, good morning, morning, Steve, and good morning, Commissioner. Commissioner Fellman, I hope will answer your question in the next, um, few slides coming up, and hopefully you'll feel a little bit more comfortable with the process. However, Heidi is going to kick us off, and then Heidi is going to hand over to me, and I must also, um, just reiterate what Steve said, this is the first time Heidi is going through, through this process, and I just think she has done a tremendous job. So Heidi, if you could kick us off, and then you can hand over to me, and I'll take it to the few slides, and then hand back over to you.
Yes, sounds good. Good morning, Heidi Popchak, Director of Aviation Finance and Budget. Um, today, we will provide you with our twenty twenty-three preliminary budget. An outline today will, uh, Managing Director Little will describe our strategy to budget, also strategic priorities, and then I will, uh, take, walk you through our budget overview as well as our operating budget, and also looking at our five-year capital forecast, our five-year financial forecast, as well as an overview of our equity spending for twenty twenty-four. And please note, we do have a number of, uh, slides in the appendix for your reference, and, um, and with that, I'll go ahead and turn that over to Managing Director Little to walk us through the strategy to budget.
Okay. And thank you, Heidi, I really, really appreciate it. And, and so Commissioners, um, the, the process, um, that we go through, and, and I guess maybe to address some of the things that Commissioner Fellman, or some of the questions Commissioner Fellman just asked, it's a top-down, bottom-up, um, approach that we have. As you can see from this, um, diagram, the, there's the century agenda, the priorities of the Commissioners are the key main and driver for our budget. And of course, the executive directors, um, priorities as outlined here, everything that we, that we do, um, as part of the budget, the expectation is that it's in alignment with the goals, priorities of the, the organization, and those goals and priorities are established by the commission and the executive, um, director. So this may not have every single detail of the process, and I'm hoping we'll get into some more of it on the next, on the next slide, but it is driven by the priorities of the Commissioners and, um, the executive director, and we, in the various different divisions, establish, um, our long-term goals to support those, those objectives. And of course, the budget is the resource, are the resources that we need in order to execute on that. And I'm going to speak a whole lot more on that on, um, the next, um, on the next, uh, slide. So Commissioner Fellman and, and other Commissioners, I'm hoping we'll answer that question by the time we get through the rest of this presentation. Next slide, please. So, um, since Commissioner Fellman raised it, I will maybe spend a little more time, um, going through this. As you can see on this diagram, we specifically have the century agenda at the top, because , uh, that's where the commission priorities are held, and everything that we do all the way down is in a, all the way down to our performance plans, and the budget is in alignment with that. Uh, this is a process that I'd started many, many years ago. We have tweaked it and refined it over the years. It's great to see that the organization has adopted this, but let me just walk you through, um, real quick. Again, we start with the century agenda. We look at what is the long-term, um, goals, vision, objective, mission that's established there. Then we establish, um, the long-term goals for the airport that's in alignment, um, with, with the century agenda, and those are typically on a five-to-ten-year basis. And we, we have a, a vision in session that we go through at the air, airport, and we look at what do we want the airport to look, feel, like, and operate over the next five to ten years. Now, once we have established that, we do a SWOT analysis, and the reason we do the SWOT analysis is that we know that we're not operating in a, in a vacuum. We're trying to get to these, these, um, goals, we're trying to get to this mission, but we have weaknesses within the organization that we have to overcome. We have strength that we have to leverage. There are, um, opportunities outside the organization that we have to take advantage of, and there are threats outside the organization that we have to mitigate. And so we do what's called a SWOT, um, analysis, a detailed SWOT analysis, and then we summarize that in the form of a SWOT profile, and I'll speak about that a little bit more in the next, in the next slide. Now, once we have done that, we do what's called a gap analysis. We look at where we're trying to get to versus where we are right now. As an example, we're trying to get to, uh, minimum connect time of seventy-five minutes, right? We're well over ninety minutes, uh, we were well over ninety minutes before we built the international arrival facility, as an example. We're still not there at that seventy-five, um, MCT or minimum connect time as yet, but that's a goal that we're trying to get to. Another one is we're trying to get to a five-star rated airport, we had a four-star, right? So there's a gap that exists. And so once we look at these gap as part of the gap analysis, then we look at what are the activities that we must do in order to reduce those gaps or eliminate those gaps to get us, um, to our, our, our long-term goal, taking into consideration all the things that we looked at as part of the SWOT analysis. And those activities are the key, um, uh, part of our strategic plan, which is our three-to-five-year strategic plan. And as part of that process, we also said, what are the strategic objectives and the KPIs that we're going to use to close those gaps to get us to our, our long-term goal? That is the strategic planning part of the process. There's two parts of the process, the planning part and the implementation part. So that is the strategic planning part of the process that we go through, and that's on a three-to-five-year basis. And once we have done that, now this is where the rubber meets the road. Uh, we do the annual business plan, so each year we'll have a twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, then we'll have a twenty twenty-five business plan. And this is where the rubber meets the road. This is where we look at all the specific activities that we must do each year in order to, to achieve the strategic or three-to-five-year goals that we have, and of course, that's aligned, um, with the long-term vision that we have, which is in alignment with the century agenda, so you can see that alignment. And we look at, uh, once we have looked at all the activities that we need to get done, and we prioritize them, then we look at what resources do we need in terms of people, in terms of equipment, and in terms of money, and that's how the budget is created. So the budget, as you might have read me say before, is a means to an end, it's not the end. The end is the vision, the mission, the long-term goals that we're trying to establish. The budget is the resources that we need each year to get us there. Also, once we have completed our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, our annual business plan, that also forms a basis for the performance plan for each of the team members within the organization. So that is the process, um, that we, that we go through. Um, there are other ways to do it, we're not saying this is the only way, but this is the one that we use, and it typically works really well, because it aligns the budget resources, um, that we're asking for with our long-term strategic plan. It, it reduces the gap that we have identified in our, um, gap analysis, it takes into consideration all the things that we consider as part of our SWOT analysis, and eventually the expectation is that it will get us to the, um, century agenda goals and the vision and mission of the organization as established by the Commissioners and the executive director. So that's the overall strategy to budget process. I'm not sure if we're doing question during or we're waiting till the end to do questions, so.
Excuse me, Lance, I, I did thank you for that clarification, but I, I did say at the beginning that you did a good job, like, and if you look at page thirty-three, you call out Commission twenty twenty-four priorities. So specifically, um, it's, the century agenda was set years ago. I'm the only one in the organization probably up here that is, was, had any input once whatsoever, but it was not this commission's goals. So, so to the, and we talked about, you know, we had like, you know, doubling air cargo or whatever, like, as, you know, it may be an important goal still, but we, that was one of them that we looked at potentially, is that still the relevant question for our KPIs to measure? So I, I just have, I take, only take exception of the fact that the century agenda goals are something we've adopted, but it wasn't something specifically that this commission implemented. How these goals consistently are implemented is this commission's purview, and I appreciate you acknowledging at least some of the ones that are, um, for twenty twenty-four, which is more specific than the five-year plan or the higher-level stuff. So I just want to make sure I concur with what you said, and I appreciate the fact that you drilled down in the course of this presentation, and now I'll let you make the presentation.
Yeah, and, and kudos again to Heidi and the team, because they, they do a lot of the detailed work there. But, and, and you're right, Commissioner, even our five, five-to-ten-year goals, they were established a long time ago. We established them several years ago, but each year, we look at what activities that we need to do, and each year, as part of this process, remember, we have the commission session where the Commissioners establish those priorities. So, so Steve and the ELT team and the airport team, we also look at what the priorities are that you guys are setting each year, and as, um, in, in, as, in, as much as we can, we include those as part of the annual budgeting process. And the ones that you see are just some, uh, it's not even all, it's some of the commission priorities that we have established, because we're not showing everything in this presentation. It would, maybe take five times, um, the amount of time that we have today, so. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so this, oh, just to get, just going to, just a little bit more, the, as I mentioned on the previous slide, we do a SWOT analysis, and with the SWOT analysis, we look at our internal strength and weaknesses, we look at the external opportunities and threat, and we have, we come up with a detailed, um, SWOT analysis. However, um, we really can't focus on everything that was in the SWOT analysis, so what we do is summarize it into what we call a SWOT profile, and what's in the SWOT profile is we prioritize which are the strengths that we're really going to focus on, um, you know, this, this, during this budget cycle or during this strategic planning cycle, which we, which are the weaknesses that we're going to focus in on overcoming? What opportunities are we going to, to take advantage of as external to our organization? And what are the external firsts that we really need to focus on mitigating? We can't focus on ten or fifteen things, right? We can focus on maybe three to five things, and that's how we come up, um, with a SWOT profile. And these, again, are the things that we're going to either leverage to get us to our goals, or we're going to, or we need to mitigate in order to get us to our goals. So that's what we, that's what the utilization of the SWOT profile for us. Next slide, please. So these are the, the, the ten primary areas that we're focusing on. Um, most organization, um, CEO or managing director will say, how, how can you have ten, um, goals? You can't really focus, um, on more than, say, three, uh, primary goals at a time, and that's, that's typically correct. However, airports are somewhat of a different beast. We have so many different businesses within, within an airport. We have, we run a mall, we run ground transportation, we run airlines operation, we have a construction business, we have so many different businesses. We have community engagement, wildlife management, um, you know, water restoration, you name it, we have it within, within an airport. It's like, uh, it's like running a city, but a little bit more complicated. And so that's one of the reasons why we have so many different, um, strategic, uh, focus areas. Now, each of the division, or the direct, sorry, the department, um, directors within the organization may be focusing on three or four goals, so that works within each of those businesses. But as a division itself, it's very hard to just focus on, uh, three primary goals just because of how complex and complicated airports are. So these are the ten priorities that we are, strategic focus areas that we focus on, and you'll see how the budget, um, request that we have aligns with each of these areas in a few more slides. Next slide, please. Uh, you, you, Commissioner then, Steve, you have seen, um, this before, and this is really to reiterate, uh, a, a couple of things. One, uh, the budget is the means to the end. It's not really, it's not the end state, it's the means to the end. We're asking for money, for people, for, um, equipment to actually try to get us to these goals, uh, that we are, that we have established. Well, there's five-star Skytrac rating, seventy-five MCT, greenest airport, um, in the, in the, in the United States, most accessible airports in North America, et cetera. The budget request that we're asking for is to actually get us to these goals, get us from four-star to five-star rated airport, and hopefully have us continue being the best airport in North America, and one, um, hopefully down the road, we'll start getting in the world ranking a few years from now as well. Next slide. All right, so how do we, how do we establish and set the priorities? As I said before, we go back, we look at our mission, long-term goals, we do a good provision, are we going to change anything major? If we are, we make the changes, if not, we do some small tweaks, and then we look at what are the twenty twenty-four objectives that we need to come up with as part of our business plan in order for us to continue moving towards those goals. There are three primary areas that we categorize our request in, the things that we must do are the things that are regulatory and commission, um, the things that the Commissioners have directed us to do for us in this category. So during the budget process, we don't argue of whether we're going to do this, whether we're going to support this, it is just a done deal. These are must-do regulatory. Then we have what we call the wildly important goals. So for example, if we have ten goals that we have established, the question is what are the top three that we must get done no matter what? If there is a, something happens during the year, and we end up not having enough money, and we can't do all ten of these activities, well, what are the top three ones that we must get done? And those are the wildly important goals. And then the, the pigs are pretty important goals, or just all the other goals, um, important goals that we have established. So those are the three categories that we have and we use, um, for our budget request. Next slide, please. And so these are just some, this is an example, there's a whole lot more than we're showing on the screen, but these are just some examples, just to give you a flavor of what fits into what category. For example, our Part one thirty-nine certification, we must do that. If we don't have, um, a part, if we don't pass the Part one thirty-nine certification, we can't run the airport. So there's, this is just mandatory, we have to do that. Uh, a lot of the security directives, um, that we have, we don't have any choice, these are regulatory, we must do them, and that's some of the examples we are showing here of some of the goals that we have, or weeks that we have as part of the security, um, goals. Next slide, please. Uh, community, very, very important to us, completing twenty-three percent, um, of the two thousand and fourteen approved Part one fifty, um, study, remember the program, by the end of the third quarter, that's one of the, um, regulatory or must-do goals that we have. And there are several goals that we have as part of our environment and sustainability, we have to meet and exceed all permit condition, wastewater, land stewardship, stormwater, et cetera. So these are examples again of must-do slash regulatory goal. Next slide. And then some examples of wildly important goals, safety is extremely important to us, and we want to achieve a reduction, um, from the previous year, um, safety management system of major incidents, five percent reduction. Uh, we can't, really can't get anything done, all the goals that you're going to hear us talk about or you've seen, uh, so far in the presentation, we can't get them done unless we have an engaged, um, employee, um, population here at the airport. And so it is important that we, um, review the employee engagement survey results that we have, and we actually put the action plans in place, and that's a priority for us in twenty twenty-four. Uh, security checkpoint still is a major challenge to us, and we have, we have established a goal of eighty percent of the people experiencing the TSA line will wait thirty minutes or less. Next slide. Other, um, goals that we have, our weeks that we have is around the customer experience, that's why we're here, we're here to serve, um, the customers, the primary customer, of course, is the passengers that come through the airport, and that number that we have, that three point nine, uh, seven as part of the, the ASQ or airport service quality, it includes a whole lot of things. It includes restroom, it includes security checkpoint, the time it takes to come through, um, customs and immigration, the cleanliness of the facility. Uh, there's several things that's included, um, in here, so even though it's one metric, it includes numerous things that we have to do to satisfy, um, the customer, meet or exceed the customer expectation. And of course, as we do all of this, we have to do it in a fiscally responsible manner, we have a debt service covered at one point four. Um, Heidi is going to speak a little bit more about that in future slides, and you'll see years that we are going to exceed this, and there are a few years that we might fall on below it in our future projections. Next slide. And then a pretty important goal, I mean, the expectation is that we're going to get all the goals done. The difference between the weeks and the pigs is if we come to the point where we have to prioritize, we have to make a decision, then the weeks takes priority, but the expectation is all of these pigs are pretty important goals, they all get done based on the request that we have within the budget. So we're requesting with people, FTEs, consultant services, equipment, um, dollars, et cetera, to actually execute all of these pigs as well. And these are just some examples, um, that we are, that we're showing here. I'm not going to go through all of them, because I want to get over to Heidi soon to get into the details of the budget, and I'm sure we'll have a lot of questions on those numbers, but they, these are the, 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 um, the foundation for the request that we have in the budget, so we think it's important for us to talk about it at the front of the presentation. Next, next slide, please. And these are just some other goals, these are on the innovation and operational efficiency side of the ten categories that we had outlined earlier. We can get into some of the details of these if you want, Commissioner, but as I said, I want to get to Heidi and the numbers. Next slide. Similar thing here, economic, um, opportunities, social responsibility, extremely important to us, our ACDBE program has been, um, successful in the past, we want to make sure we continue being.
So Steve and the E L T team and the airport team, we also look at what the priorities are that you guys are setting each year. And as in, in, as in, as much as we can, we include those as part of the annual budgeting process. And the ones that you see are just some, it's not even all, it's some of the commission priorities that we have established because we're not showing everything in this presentation. It would maybe take five times the amount of time that we have today. So, all right, next slide, please. Okay, so this, oh, just to get, just going to just a little bit more, there, as I mentioned on the previous slide, we do a SWOT analysis. And with the SWOT analysis, we look at our internal strength and weaknesses. We look at external opportunities and threats, and we have, we come up with a detailed SWOT analysis. However, we really can't focus on everything that was in the SWOT analysis. So what we do is summarize it into what we call a SWOT profile. And what's in the SWOT profile is we prioritize which are the strengths that we're really going to focus on, you know, this, this during this budget cycle or during this strategic planning cycle, which we, which are the weaknesses that we're going to focus in on overcoming? What opportunities are we going to, to take advantage of as external to organization? And what are the external firsts that we really need to focus on mitigating? We can't focus on 10 or 15 things, right? We can focus on maybe three to five things, and that's how we come up with a SWOT profile. And these again are the things that we're going to either leverage to get us to our goals, or we're going to, or we need to mitigate in order to get us to our goals. So that's what we, that's what the utilization of the SWOT profile for us. Next slide, please. So these are the, the, the 10 primary areas that we're focusing on. Most organization, CEO or managing director will say, how, how can you have 10 goals? You can't really focus on more than, say, three primary goals at a time. And that's, that's typically correct. However, airports are somewhat of a different beast. We have so many different businesses within, within an airport. We have, we run a mall, we run ground transportation, we run airlines operation, we have a construction business, we have so many different businesses. We have community engagement, wildlife management, you know, water restoration, you name it, we have it within, within an airport. It's like, uh, it's like running a city, but a little bit more complicated. And so that's one of the reasons why we have so many different strategic focus areas. Now, each of the division or the direct, sorry, the department directors within the organization may be focusing on three or four goals. So that works within each of those businesses. But as a division itself, it's very hard to just focus on three primary goals just because of how complex and complicated airports are. So these are the 10 priorities that we are strategic focus areas that we focus on. And you'll see how the budget request that we have aligns with each of these areas in a few more slides. Next slide, please. Uh, you, you, Commissioner Lance, Steve, you have seen this before, and this is really to reiterate a, a, a couple of things. One, uh, the budget is the means to the end. It's not really, it's not the end state, it's the means to the end. We're asking for money, for people, for, um, equipment to actually try to get us to these goals, uh, that we are, that we have established. Well, there's five-star SkyTruck rating, 75 M C T, Greenest Airport, um, in the, in the, in the United States, most accessible airports in North America, et cetera. The budget request that we're asking for is to actually get us to these goals, get us from four-star to five-star rated airport, and hopefully have us continue being the best airport in North America and one, um, hopefully down the road, we'll start getting in the world ranking a few years from now as well. Next slide. All right, so how do we, how do we establish and set the priorities? As I said before, we go back, we look at our mission, long-term goals, we do a quick revision, are we going to change anything major? If we are, we make the changes. If not, we do some small tweaks, and then we look at what are the 2024 objectives that we need to come up with as part of our business plan in order for us to continue moving towards those goals. There are three primary areas that we categorize our request in, the things that we must do are the things that are regulatory and commission, um, the things that the commissioners have directed us to do for us in this category. So during the budget process, we don't argue whether we're going to do this, whether we're going to support this, it is just a done deal. These are must-do regulatory. Then we have what we call the wildly important goals. So for example, if we have 10 goals that we have established, the question is, what are the top three that we must get done no matter what? If there is a, something happens during the year and we end up not having enough money and we can't do all 10 of these activities, well, what are the top three ones that we must get done? And those are the wildly important goals. And then the, the pigs are pretty important goals are just all the other goals, um, important goals that we have established. So those are the three categories that we have and we use for our budget request. Next slide, please. And so these are just some, this is an example, there's a whole lot more than we're showing on the screen, but these are just some examples, just to give you a flavor of what fits into what category. For example, our Part 139 certification, we must do that. If we don't have, um, a part, if we don't pass the Part 139 certification, we can't run the airport. So there's, this is just mandatory, we have to do that. A lot of the security directives, um, that we have, we don't have any choice, these are regulatory, we must do them. And that's some of the examples we are showing here of some of the goals that we have or weeks that we have as part of the security, um, goals. Next slide, please. Uh, community, very, very important to us, completing 23% of the 2014 approved Part 150 study, remedy program by the end of the third quarter. That's one of the, um, regulatory or must-do goals that we have. And there are several goals that we have as part of our environment and sustainability. We have to meet and exceed all permit condition, wastewater, land stewardship, stormwater, et cetera. So these are examples again of must-do slash regulatory goal. Next slide. And then some examples of wildly important goals. Safety is extremely important to us, and we want to achieve a reduction, um, from the previous year, um, safety management system of major incidents, 5% reduction. Uh, we can't, really can't get anything done. All the goals that you're going to hear us talk about or you've seen, uh, so far in the presentation, we can't get them done unless we have an engaged, um, employee, um, population here at airports. And so it is important that we, um, review the employee engagement survey results that we have, and we actually put the action plans in place, and that's a priority for us in 2024. Uh, security checkpoint still is a major challenge to us, and we have, we have established a goal of 80% of the people experience in the TSA line will wait 30 minutes or less. Next slide. Other, um, goals that we have or weeks that we have is around the customer experience. That's why we're here, we're here to serve, um, the customers, the primary customer, of course, is the passengers that come through the airport. And that number that we have, that 3.97 as part of the, the ASQ or airport service quality, it includes a whole lot of things. It includes restroom, it includes security checkpoint, the time it takes to come through, customs and immigration, the cleanliness of the facility. There's several things that's included, um, in here. So even though it's one metric, it includes numerous things that we have to do to satisfy, um, the customer, meet or exceed the customer expectation. And of course, as we do all of this, we have to do it in a fiscally responsible manner. We have a debt service coverage at 1.4. Heidi's going to speak a little bit more about that in future slides, and you'll see years that we are going to exceed this, and there are a few years that we might fall below it in our future projections. Next slide. And then a pretty important goal. I mean, the expectation is that we're going to get all the goals done. The difference between the wigs and the pigs is if we come to the point where we have to prioritize, we have to make a decision, then the wigs takes priority. But the expectation is all of these pigs are pretty important goals. They all get done based on the request that we have within the budget. So we're requesting with people, FTEs, consultant services, equipment, um, dollars, et cetera, to actually execute all of these pigs as well. And these are just some examples, um, that we are, that we're showing here. I'm not going to go through all of them because I want to get over to Heidi soon to get into the details of the budget, and I'm sure we'll have a lot of questions on those numbers. But they, these are the, 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 um, the foundation for the request that we have in the budget, so we think it's important for us to talk about it at the front of the presentation. Next, next slide, please. And these are just some other goals, these are on the innovation and operational efficiency side of the 10 categories that we had outlined earlier. We can get into some of the details of these if you want, Commissioner, but as I said, I want to get to Heidi on the numbers. Next slide. Similar thing here, economic opportunities, social responsibility, extremely important to us, our A C D B E program has been, um, successful in the past, we want to make sure we continue, uh, being successful. The D B E participation, we struggle, um, with that, um, in the past, we want to make sure we provide more opportunities to, um, our underserved community, where small minority-owned businesses, et cetera. And next slide. Um, now, in order for us to achieve all of this, we have to generate the revenues, um, to get there. You're gonna, Heidi's going to speak about this, or, um, commercial management team has this huge task to generate a lot of non-aerodynamic revenues. But the entire organization also have a responsibility to contain that cost. Because remember, we have that 1.4 debt service coverage goal that we're trying to achieve. So everybody within the organization has to participate, um, towards it. And of course, as we do this, we have to do it in a responsible manner. We have our, um, greenhouse gas emission goals, central agenda goals, that we have to make sure that we meet as well. So we have several goals in there, or objectives in there, and several requests in the budget to actually meet these environmental and sustainability goals that we'll get into a few slides down in the presentation. Next slide, please. And we have to build all these facilities, um, that we need to keep pace with the tremendous growth that's taken place within the region. We have an objective to achieve 75% of the capital program scheduled milestone and also 75% of the planned expenditure for a huge program such as ours, and you, Heidi is going to speak about that, you'll see, we'll be spending over a billion dollars, um, in certain years coming up. So it's a huge undertaking, um, for us to, for us to achieve, and we think 75% is really a stretch goal, um, for, for our team that's working on these projects. Next slide. So before handing over to, to, um, Heidi, Commissioner, I just, just want to point something out, and I hope Heidi reiterates it again. Uh, the, the budget request, um, that we have, uh, we took into consideration all the new facilities that we currently have, the new square footage that we currently have, all these huge capital development projects that we have to get done, all the operational goals, everything. However, even after all of that, the request that we are, that we're, the increase in our budget versus 2023 is still within single digits. And I think that's something we really need to highlight because I think it's important, not only for the commissioners, but also to our external stakeholders, um, such as, such as the airline. We are able to make a request to achieve all of these things that we have with all the new facilities, everything, and still stay within single digits relative to last year. And I think that is extremely, um, important. So with that said, I'm going to hand over to Heidi, unless there are any questions on this section from Stephen Commissioners. It's not, I'll hand over to Heidi, which will take the presentation over from here.
All right, thank you, Lance. Real quick before we move on, any questions?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, Commissioner Philman.
I am, I just think it's really important to just make sure we understand the guidance that we will then be, uh, shown how you're meeting that guidance throughout the rest of his presentations. I promise I won't take up much more time, but, um, I, I, I was surprised that the 23% implementation of the Part 150 by 2014, so 2014 goal, um, that you characterize this as regulatory, because I recall some commissions ago that we just said we should accelerate it, um, but was that, is that actually a regulatory goal?
It's part of the Part 150, um, study that we have, and I think we have Sarah Cox online to, um, help to answer that question, but it's part of the existing one, Part 150 study, so we consider that regulatory. Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, please. Is she on?
She's in the, uh, chambers.
Oh, okay.
I was, I was walking up. Uh, yes, because we have...
Could you introduce yourself a quick?
Oh, thank you. Sarah Cox, Director of Environment Sustainability for Aviation. This Part 150, because, um, it's a regulatory requirement that we have committed this obligation with the FAA to meet this accelerated, and then through the commission to meet this accelerated, um, schedule, that it is a regulatory commitment for us to fulfill our grant obligations. We've submitted grants to, um, perform the sound insulation packages with FAA. And so through those various obligations, it triggers us into a regulatory threshold. It doesn't compare, like, for a stormwater permit where you have a sampling permit condition, it's just in a little different context than that.
Okay, so for clarification, it's once we've asked to do it, we're obligated to do it, but the rate at which we're doing it?
Is accelerated.
It's accelerated only because the, we were lagging behind before, and it's commissions asking to do it. So my question is, is the rate at which we do it regulatory, or only once we obligate ourselves to do some portion of it?
The rate is not obligated, um, we're not required on the rate. However, as we move forward into our next Part 150, that will have a different set about, or potentially have a different set of boundaries. So under our current Part 150, we want to achieve as much as possible under, um, the current, uh, boundary, noise remedy boundary, to be able to insulate, um, the various residents and facilities.
All right, so thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner, if I could, could I say this just real quick? They, the, the fact that we have to do it is regulatory, the rate and the speed of which we do it is commission-directed.
Correct. Correct.
And that's why the acceleration was done.
That's why the acceleration, but then it expires once we adopt a new Part 150 standard.
All right, thank you. And just, Lance, at another time, it seems to me we have various different ways of measuring customer satisfaction, right? There, there is the SkyTrucks goal, which is the specific one, the ASQ, J D Powers, pet survey, I never even heard of the pet survey, is that how well we treat our pets? But, but it's, it to me, which we do have relief centers and all that, but I'm just wondering, at another time, it, it just seems to me important to understand, because we set our K P I's to the SkyTrucks, but we measure various other things. So I, I don't want to deliver...
I can touch on it real quickly, Commissioner, I can touch on it real quickly. Um, the, the, the pets is an internal survey that, that's done by us, local survey, Julie can speak more about it. Every, all the surveys that we have have deficiencies in them. For example, the ASQ, um, a survey will probably not look at our security checkpoint or, or the drives coming in, on the, on the drives coming in. It's probably in the whole room areas, the arrivals, um, process, et cetera, right? So each of these have, have gaps in them. So we try to do multiple surveys because we want to make sure we capture the customer experience through the entire airport. We can go into it a whole lot more detail, but just on the, the, the very high level, each of the surveys have gaps, they don't look at the entire customer experience. So doing two or three, focusing on two or three surveys, we'll be able to capture the entire customer experience.
So maybe another time we can get a presentation of that.
Oh, yeah, we can, we can, Julie, Julie eats, sleeps and drinks this. So, um, yeah, you can bring Julie in at a time appropriate to go through the details of these.
Great. Yeah.
Um, and now over to Heidi.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Commissioner.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't hear you finish.
President Cho, how are we with time? I just want to be mindful.
Uh, we're, we're doing okay, but if we can keep it brief, that'll do it.
Keep our comments to a minimum. So in the SWOT analysis profile section, I noticed that the demand for travel is in our opportunity section, and obviously we want people to come to our region. But at the same time, I see that as a, a, um, also an issue, right? With the surge of passengers, considering the significant challenges around the construction projects that we have. And so how we will be addressing those potential challenges, I'm imagining will come through these slides, but I, I just wanted to point that out, that while that's an opportunity, I also see that as a, as a, a challenge, and in some cases, a threat when it comes to, uh, secure, security lines and, um, passenger issues, and they can't get through our checkpoints quick enough.
Yeah, Commissioner, you hit the nail on the head. They, they, there are many things that you, that we could have in both categories, um, opportunities and, the size of our airport is one of our biggest disadvantage. The size of our airport is one of our biggest advantage, right? Depending on what you're looking at. For connecting passengers, it's great because it's small, um, but because of everything else that we need to do, we just don't have enough space. So you're, you're exactly right, um, in terms of the demand for travel is an opportunity, but it also creates a lot of problems and, and challenges that we have as well. And you'll see in the request, for example, the, the emphasis on getting people through the security checkpoint within a certain timeframe, actually building the airport dining and retail, the due-to-free facilities that we need, lounges, et cetera. All of these are, are challenges, um, that we face because of the demand, um, for travel. So we have a lot of things in the budget to address, uh, to address those. So we'll, you'll, you'll see a lot of them as Heidi goes through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, Heidi, take it away.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. So, next slide, please. So this slide provides, uh, overview of the budget context for the 2024 Aviation Division. And the five key themes are noted on the slide. An executive metric mentioned in his opening remarks about total passenger volume forecast that we are recovering to exceed 2019 passenger levels, and we'll talk more about that in the next slide. Secondly, our non-aeronautical revenues are strong, they are well above our 2019 levels, which is, you know, our non-aeronautical revenues are more of our public parking and ground transportation revenue streams. And thirdly, we have a growing capital program where over the next five to 10 years, and we have some detail associated with that growth, and, and as Managing Director Little mentioned, a billion dollars, um, in the forecast to, uh, deliver on the capital program. As well as with the fourth item there, the high inflation of baseline costs, payroll growing, this is something that is very similar, as you heard in the central services presentation, you know, the airport is not immune from that as well. And also, lastly, the risk of economic recession, we're monitoring the economy and the markets just to be, um, mindful of that and to have our conservative forecast assumptions. Next slide, please. So this slide illustrates our total passenger recovery forecast. As you can see in blue, those are our figures for passengers, the actual passengers that we have for those respective years. And yellow is our 2023 budget that the commission saw and, and we, um, uh, used to inform the 2023 budget process. The green illustrates our passenger forecasts for 2023, 24, and 25. As you can see, for 2024, we're anticipating a 2.1% increase on 2019 levels of passengers for the airport. And also that just looking at our, it's a strong recovery, essentially, the story we're trying to tell with this slide. Next slide, please. So then just looking at our strong operating revenue recovery, as you can see by, um, the green block there, that's relates to our aeronautical revenue, uh, the blue relates to our non-aeronautical revenue, and we're anticipating a 7, 7.5% increase when compared to the 2023 budget. The aeronautical revenues represent about 61% of our total revenue, and the non-aero about 39%. In addition, um, we are, uh, with the aeronautical revenues, it's primarily cost recovery, and we have seen, um, we have exhausted a number of our relief grants. So in 2024, you'll see in the subsequent slides that that full amount has been exhausted from concessionaire grants. Next slide, please. And as I noted, you know, we have a growing capital program, and as you can see in the forecast, in 2025, you see that peak, that's going to be our highest spending of approximately 1.25 billion dollars. And also recognizing that we have, um, added additional resources in the operating budget to support that. One thing of note is just that we are not, the forecast does not include any SAMP or our sustainable airport master plan near-term projects. Next slide, please. So this slide provides a high-level overview of our operating revenues, also our operating expenses, and some key, um, indicators that we track as, um, for financial performance. As you can see on the top there, the top row, aeronautical revenues is, uh, for, is budgeted to grow at 4.6%, non-aeronautical revenues roughly 12.4%, and in total, it would increase about 7.5%. And then looking at our total operating expenses, we, as, um, Managing Director Little alluded to, like, we have a lot of work to do, and we managed to keep it under in the single digits of 9.1% of an increase. So then looking down below are some of our key financial indicators, looking at our debt service coverage, which essentially means that how much, uh, how many times can we pay our debt service payments annually each year? And so we want to have a reasonable amount of debt service coverage or, or ratio in order to, uh, meet the targets that are outlined in our business plan, and also for our, um, rating agencies. So as you can see, excuse me, for 2024, our debt service coverage is at 1.88. The next row associates with our airport development fund, which is our cash on hand. We have a target of 18 months, and for 2024, we show that we'll reach 17 months, and by 2025, we'll reach that 18-month target. The next row has the cost per employment, which is a key metric for our airline partners, just to show how, uh, much of the expenses related to the airlines are allocated across the passenger totals. So for 2024, we see $18.61, and as you can see, there's a reduction there when compared to 2023 of 3.5%. And then we go into our non-aeronautical net operating income, we're seeing an increase in that, as well as in plane, passengers are recovering but are not exceeding at a rapid leap rate, we are just returning to, um, 2019 levels, a little bit over 2019 levels. Next slide, please. Now we'll move on to delving more into the preliminary operating budget components. So there are a lot of numbers here, but essentially it illustrates a drill down of some of our operating expenses. As you can see, payroll consumes a, a significant portion of that, about 210 million. And that's because, as you heard in the central services presentation, that, you know, we have, uh, representative staff, uh, contract increases, we have, uh, an assumption of 7% for non-represented staff, average for COLA and pay-for-performance, also there's a 5% payroll vacancy, and also we included 39 new FTEs, which you'll hear more about later. The remainder is approximately 148 million for non-payroll, and then that's associated directly with the airport charges. And then we have approximately, um, a 12.4% increase related to central services to help us continue to, um, support and operate the airport. Next slide, please. So this is a, our waterfall slide, which is essentially our crosswalk to how we got to the 2023 budget, then to the 2024 preliminary budget. As you can see on the slide, the yellow, there were a number of budget adjustments that we, uh, performed in order to get to the 2024 baseline budget. And then we added those cost increases associated with the payroll pieces, that's around 17 million, contract increases about 4 million, and then costs tied to revenues, 2 million, and then some additional non-payroll items, about 4 million. So we started, um, with approximately 324 million for baseline for the 2024 budget. And then we took and reviewed a number of budget requests that I will go into, um, later, but a number of budget requests that were added that came up to the amount of 358 million, uh, around 359 million, which is, um, approximately the budget that you see today for, for the aviation preliminary budget. Next slide, please. So as Managing Director Little mentioned and walked us through our, our strategic focus areas, this is how those new budget requests align with those focus areas. As you can see at the bottom, uh, in... As you can see at the bottom, in particular, the asset management and capital development and delivery focus area, approximately $16.6 million of our new budget requests align with, with that focus area. And then, we have our customer experience focus area, which we proposed to have 7.1 million investments dedicated to that. And also, you'll see that has the largest number of our new FTE requests of 29 of the 39 that we've requested in the budget. And then, lastly, just kind of the big-ticket items, environment and sustainability, we have approximately $6.5 million of new budget requests associated with that, and, and primarily tied with that must-do regulatory prioritization that Managing Director Little outlined earlier. Next slide, please. So this is a summary of the budget requests. We received 210 high-quality, well-thought-out budget requests from Aviation Division staff. They had very strong business cases and definitely our needs of the airport. And, and that equated to about $53 million. And, and recognizing we are limited to our operation, operating expense growth, we had to make some very difficult decisions and approve about $35 million of those adds. So recognizing we have a number of goals to achieve at the airport, we did limit ourselves to that 9.1% increase to our budget, and that equates to about 39 FTEs and $35 million of new investments. And then, to the table to the right, you'll see how we prioritize those new investments by our must-do regulatory wigs and pigs. And I'll talk more about airline realignment in the subsequent slide, but just wanted to illustrate that, you know, we make sure that we have alignment in our strategic goals, our business plan, and as well as prioritizing those budget requests by our must-do regulatory and wigs and pigs. Next slide, please. So this slide provides an overview of some of our largest approved budget requests. So as you can see at the top there, airline realignment is roughly $7.1 million. And that's essentially costs associated with relocating an airline carrier their space to another space because there is a capital project that will be underway in that initial space. And so, we are working with our accounting and financial reporting partners here at the port to possibly reclassify some of those costs to, from operating expense to capital based on our port's capitalization policy. So we are diligently working with them now, and we'll report back to you on that work to determine if we are able to shift some of those costs to capital. The other element is with, working with our planning group to support our growing capital program. And so, expenses tied to that is roughly $3.4 million.
Can I ask just a quick question?
Sure.
If we shift it from expense to capital, does that allow us a sort of longer payback period for it?
Correct, yeah. So it will be amortized for part of our debt service, right? Because we'll take out bonds to pay for it.
Great, thank you.
Can I, can I also, just since we're there, I have two questions. One is, when we talk about, and I think I asked Dan this question a few weeks ago when we got a overview, but maybe you can provide a little more detail. You know, it's interesting to me that our non-aeronautical revenues are going up despite the fact that our passenger volumes have not quite recovered to 2019 levels. And I think I asked Dan what accounts for the increase in non-aeronautical revenues despite the fact that we don't have as many people going through the airport. And I threw up maybe parking rates going up as an example, but I'm curious if you can shed light on any, anything else that, is it because we've added ADR tenants? I'm, I'm just curious kind of to, to understand what the, what that is.
We have a slide for that.
Oh, perfect, okay. Well, I'm glad I answered, I asked that question before.
There is a line graph that illustrates our employment, as well as the non-aeronautical revenue streams and how they've increased, specifically, public parking and, and rental cars and ground transportation associated with that. So, so we'll have, we'll illustrate that line graph to share with you kind of what are some of those drivers. But it's primarily public parking, and with that rate increase in 2023, that's now reflected in 2024. But we've also seen, you know, suspect that passengers are wanting to limit their interactions with folks due to this post-pandemic phase where they want to drive into the, or use our garage space for, before they travel. So, so there is a line graph there just to kind of show the, the revenue streams and how they've increased. And then, you'll see employments are pretty much stable and just recovering based to 2019 levels, but it's really passenger behavior, clubs and lounges, folks are taking advantage of those amenities here at the airport. So, so there's additional information that I can point you to in the slide.
Excellent. And then, my second question was regards to FTEs. Commissioner Hozagawa and I recently had an opportunity to meet with the ILW Local 9. And one of my questions was, how do we account for what might be in the next collective bargaining agreement when it comes to budgeting and, you know, increased costs for us? Is that factored in here in, in our 24, 2024 forecast? And then, secondly, I think one of the things that was flagged for us as a concern is, is that there's a personnel shortage. And so, when we talk about, you know, we only raised 9.1%, we had to make a choice on how many FTEs we're going to hire. How do we, what, and maybe this is a Lance question more, but what is the process through which we make those hiring NFT decisions specifically at the airport?
Heidi, you want me to jump in here?
Yes, that'd be great.
You want to start? Okay. Yes, Commissioner, the, the process that I just went through, the budget, as I said, is not the end, it's the means of the end. So we actually start with a business plan. And with a business plan, we look at what are the activities that we are going to get done in 2024? And we have those categorized in the mandatory, the wigs, the pigs. Then, we look at what are the resources that we absolutely need in order to get those done? What are the FTEs that we need, consultants that we need, money that we need, equipment that we need? That's how we come up with the FTEs. And we, we have to make, you know, some tough decisions. We have a lot of people that are disappointed because they did not get either the money or some of the FTE requests that they asked for. But it's, it's some tough decision that we have to make, and we have to, to kind of make that balance. We don't want to go, you know, overboard and have a fat budget and a fat organization. And then, if anything happens, remember one of the first slides Heidi pointed out, is there are a lot of unknowns out there, inflation, there is, you know, could be another pandemic, there's a whole lot of unknowns. So we want to make sure that we have a lean enough budget that in the eventuality that we have any of these issues popping up, we, you know, we, we don't have too many FTEs onboard, but we have the right amount of FTEs that we need in order to execute what's in our, our business plan. So, you know, it's part science, it's part art, there's no perfect way to make the decision. But we also think we have a fiscal responsibility to the organization to request just the resources that we need to execute what's in the 2024 business plan. And that was the driver for the FTEs and all the other requests that you see here that we're asking for approval.
And can you quickly speak to my first question about how we factor in any cost increases from labor negotiations that are pending?
In recognizing the, the pending negoti, the contracts are in negotiations. So for the budget process, we just have a global assumption, and that's something that we just put in the budget, but recognizing that the outcomes of those representative groups and, and those labor contracts will, will supersede that, right? So we have to put an assumption, but it, we recognize that those contracts will prevail, and we'll update the budget to accommodate that.
So, so is it fair to say that we would just put in a benchmark assumption on labor costs in general as opposed to diving into the specifics of, you know, this division, this, these workers, we're expecting? I, I guess, I guess, I'm curious about like, how granular do we get when we forecast? Or would we make these assumptions? It sounds like we just kind of make a general assumption about increase in labor costs?
So for the 2024 budget, we had a global assumption for non-represented, and then just put represented as that same assumption, recognizing that those contracts are in negotiation. And so, that's the approach we took.
Okay, okay, thank you. Commissioner Mohammed has a question, go ahead.
I have a quick question on slide 27, to the FTE point. I, I noticed the security, I would have assumed the security numbers would be higher. How is our security divided among port police, TSA, and aviation security? And considering some of the TSA workforce challenges, do we account for that when we're allocating dollars towards security? Or do we consider that?
Yes, and I'll probably defer to Managing Director Little to speak to more of that.
Yeah, again, as I said, the, the, the request for FTEs for money for equipment is based on the activities that we have in our business plan. So what we're asking for is actually what we need to execute, what's in our business plan. In addition to that, we are actually conducting what we call an efficiency and effectiveness study, where I think we're going to try to start it maybe before the end of the year, but it's not going to be completed until next year. We do this every four, five years. The last time we did it was about five years ago or six years ago. And we look at the entire organization, we benchmark against other airports in the nation, and the consultants come up with a recommendation in terms of how each division should be staffed in order for us to get to our long-term goals. So we're going through that exercise as well, and once that's finished, we may, we will have more information to come back to say, okay, maybe we need more FTEs in the security department, in operations, in commercial management, you name it. But for now, the budget request that we're making here is the FTEs that we need in order to execute the specific things that's in the 2024 business plan.
Thank you.
As a point of clarification, the police department is not under the aviation budget, correct?
Correct.
Commissioner Phelan.
I see we have a goal with TSA processing, but it is TSA that does the work. And I seem to recall in following up on Commissioner Mohammed's question that we could supplement, well, we could take on the security checking, but you can't like just supplement it? You're like either all-in or you're not? Is that true?
Heidi, let me maybe jump in here again. The ironic thing about our business is that we have many goals that we established that we have no control over, but we have influence. Because we depend on TSA, we depend on airline, we depend on CBP to get a lot of, a lot of stuff that we're trying to get done, accomplish. We however assist, us and the airlines, we assist the TSA, we assist CBP during peak periods, for example, to do exit controls, so you don't have a TSO, Transportation Security Officer doing that versus actually opening an additional lane and do more screening. So we assist. However, this is not something that we want to do on a permanent basis. It's very, very expensive, and we think that's the role of the TSA. So we're working through ACI, through, through AAAE to actually lobby, to make sure that the TSA gets the resources that they need to perform this function effectively and efficiently, and not have airlines or airport do it. Because it's not our function, it's not sustainable, we can't do it continuously. We do it during peak period, but it's a very expensive undertaking.
Thank you. Thanks, Lance. Sorry, Heidi, go ahead.
Thank you. So the remainder, remainder request on this slide are key initiatives that we're continuing into 2024. And then, we have all other, about $6.2 million that are not listed because they are in aggregate. So that completes this slide. So next slide, please. So these are some, a smaller budget requests that are essentially under $500,000. Just wanted to give you a flavor of some of those requests under those strategic area focus for the airport. So, and you'll see that it's sprinkled out in this slide, some of the Commissioner budget priorities, which we'll also talk about in a subsequent slide. Next slide, please. Okay, so this table just illustrates the different classifications for the new FTE requests that we have proposed, the 39. And as I mentioned earlier, 29 of those FTEs are in the customer experience focus area. And then, we have the others in health and safety, security, innovation, and operational efficiencies. And then, lastly, in the asset management category. Next slide, please. So here's just, again, some key elements to keep in mind as we develop the 2024 budget is that, you know, as I said earlier, the risk of a recession, high inflation, we keep that top of mind, as well as looking at our preliminary budget, some of those factors that we've incorporated, you know, payroll vacancy rate of 5%. We have those increased medical benefit costs. We know that the HR compensation project is yet to be complete, so we factored in just an estimate. Our potential new air service incentives, we do have budget in for that, as well as the impacts, potential impacts of PFAS, and as well as environmental remediation liability costs. I do want to note that, you know, we do not include any budget related to employee parking and snow events. Employee parking meaning kind of the new increase in value for employee parking passes. And so, there's some associated tax implications that we're studying here, here at the airport. And then, snow events, we, we just, you know, we, we don't have the crystal ball, right? So we will probably absorb those costs as they, as they happen this year, or for 2024. Next slide, please.
Sorry, Heidi, one more question from Commissioner Phelan. Well, maybe not one more.
So with regards to PFAS, I, I see on page 25, we actually have a significant reduction in environmental exposure. But in fact, there is this, it says environmental remediation liability is minus 97.8%. But there is this huge uncertainty associated with PFAS, right? So we are assuming, you know, the whole budget, we have like a proposed budget, we don't have like assuming that labor costs will be more, or we don't have an assumption that all these environmental lobby liabilities come in, we're just saying, you know, this is why, what we think, right? It's a singular.
It's a snapshot in time, right? And so, I think that's something that with our Director Sarah Cox in Environmental for Aviation can speak more to, but as far as the.
I just use that as an example of.
Right, right. But for the budget purpose, it is a snapshot in time for, for the environmental remediation liability. But speaking to PFAS, I can defer to Ms. Cox.
Thank you again, Sarah Cox with Aviation Environment and Sustainability. With respect to PFAS, we, and the environmental remediation liability, we are currently doing site assessments and have just initiated engagement with the Department of Ecology. So once, once we define what an obligating event under that regulatory framework looks like, we will then incorporate that into the ERL. But at this point in time, it's expense-related funding for our investigation for PFAS.
So you don't expect a cleanup bill until the following year?
Or, or later, depending on.
Right, but that's, this is just to study money.
Exactly.
And, and then, so while I have you there, so I see the decarbonization study.
Correct.
Is grant-funded.
Yes.
It's the money in hand?
So it, well, 2024, we have an FAA grant up to $900,000 to evaluate decarbonizing our central mechanical plant.
So that grant funding is actually hard money?
Yes.
All right, and I'm sorry, but.
And it's a percent. I believe, I believe we cover 80%.
President Zhou, could we write down questions so that Heidi can finish? We really need to, it's 10:15, we got 45 minutes left. We gotta get through Heidi's material.
Uncertainties in our budget, we're, Julie being asked to do that.
And we'll have a chance to be in.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to take any more questions until the end of Heidi's presentation. Thank you.
And we can, next slide, please. So we wanted to highlight the Commissioner 2024 budget priorities. And as Managing Director Little mentioned earlier, that this is just a few of them, it's not the, the whole inventory of priorities that we're working on with the Commission at the airport, but just some of the notable ones that we wanted to, to illustrate here that our increase in budget for 2024 will continue the work in precondition air, anti-human trafficking, access to affordable, high-quality childcare for airport workers, and lastly, hygiene product vending machines. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide illustrates our net operating income for aeronautical. And, and as I mentioned earlier, aeronautical revenues are based, are cost recovery and are regulated by the FAA. And so as you can see here, total base revenues have a modest increase for 2024 of 4.3%, as well as the aeronautical, excuse me, total aeronautical expenses, roughly about 8.9%. Next slide, please. This slide illustrates our non-aeronautical net operating income. It is a lot of numbers, but to your point, Commissioner Cho, as I mentioned, you know, public parking is increasing in revenue because it captures that rate increase for, in 2023. But also passenger behavior. So we see a 14.7% increase in revenues for, for public parking when compared to 2023. And also rental cars, we see a 14.4% increase. So, and then the other line items associated with non-aeronautical revenue streams, you know, airport dining and retail, clubs and lounges, and utilities. And then again, just want to highlight that in the less concession relief grants row, as you can see, we've exhausted all of those grants in 2024. So just wanted to point that out, that we utilize those, we've drawn down on all of those grants. Next slide, please. Now Commissioner Cho, this is the slide I was alluding to earlier. So this illustrates the non-aeronautical revenues when, in compared to employments. As you can see, the employments are recovering from 2019. But you see the passenger behavior of utilizing non-aeronautical revenues, public parking, ground transportation has increased more. And we, we assume that it is associated with, you know, folks taking advantage of, more advantage of clubs and lounges and the parking at the airport garage. Next slide, please. So now we'll transition to talk, to review our five-year preliminary capital forecast. Next slide. And so with this slide, we want to provide kind of an overview of our capital program objectives. We want to provide facilities that meet or exceed our strategic and business plan objectives. As Managing Director Little mentioned earlier, you know, five-star tracks rating and top 25 airport service quality. We want to make sure we're the most accessible airport and the greenest airport. And some of those example projects that are helping us get there or will help us get there is our SCA Gateway, North Main Terminal Redevelopment Project, our C Concourse Expansion Project, and also our baggage optimization project. And, and these are considered our mega, three of our mega projects, which are over $300 million. Next slide, please. So as you can see here, this is a look ahead of our capital program forecast. On the top there to the left, you'll see our mega projects. As I mentioned just moments ago, you know, baggage optimization, C Concourse, SCA Gateway, S Concourse Evolution, and the main terminal improvement projects are some of our larger projects that we have at the airport. And with just those mega projects, we anticipate in the five-year forecast, 2.2, roughly 2.3 billion dollars of cash flows. And then down below, you'll see that we have a line item for other capital projects, our SAMP preliminary planning and design forecast, and CIP reserves. Next slide, please. So this slide illustrates in a bar chart form that with our mega projects, which are the dark blue, we anticipate our peak spending in 2025 at roughly 1.25 billion. And so in the green, you see the 100 to 300 million dollar projects. And then the lighter blue, you see the 20 to 100 million dollar projects. And then the orange is some of our lower, under 20 million dollar projects. And then the gray is our CIP reserves. So over the five-year period, we're forecasting to spend approximately $5 billion. And this will help us be ready for the FIFA World Cup in 2026. So we want to make sure we get those projects underway to accommodate passengers and travelers during that time. Next slide, please. So as we prioritize, you know, our budget requests, we also prioritize and categorize our capital projects. So this is a table that illustrates the various categories of our capital projects. As you can see, the purple is our mega projects, as I mentioned earlier, but also looking at our renewal replacement forecast, approximately $700 million. And, and so we're staying on top of renewal and replacement. One example project is our industrial waste treatment plant. We're doing expansion there, or renovations there. Also, we have our business needs of roughly 770 million. And an example project is, you know, our post-international arrivals facility, airline realignment. And then we have noise, our SAMP design pre-approval and SLA agreement, as well as reserves and allowances. So just wanted to illustrate this in a way like a pie chart, as well as show the category costs. Next slide, please. So we have included two new projects in the 2024 budget. One is a gate modification project, roughly 115 million. And the second project is a small jobs project of $10 million, which is to do work at the, at the airport for jobs that are under $300,000. So that's just simply just two projects that we've added for 2024. Next slide, please. So now we'll transition to the look ahead and the preliminary financial forecast, looking at revenues and expenditures in total. Next slide, please. And looking at our financial forecast objectives, you know, it's really to ensure that the airport's five-year financial look meets or exceeds our financial performance. And we have those key financial targets that I've mentioned earlier about, you know, achieving greater than 1.4 times of our debt service coverage and the 18 months of cash on hand for our airport development fund. And also just consistently growing our non-aeronautical revenues. Next slide, please. So with this table, it is a look ahead, and we included some very conservative financial assumptions and for our aeronautical revenues and non-aeronautical revenues, as well as our operating expenses. We do see a availability for debt service over the forecast that row, as well as looking at our CFC, which is our customer facility charge offsets. Those are costs that are paid by the rental car companies. And then our passenger facility charge offsets increase modestly through the forecast. Next slide, please. So looking, considering our financial forecast, we also have the forecast metrics that I've been alluding to. Again, debt service coverage, this is the look ahead, as well as looking at cash on hand, our cost per employment forecast, and, and the other items, I don't want to go through them all, but just to know that those are some of the financial forecast metrics that we monitor and try to target for, at the airport. Next slide. Our next section will go into equity and spending. And for the airport, we have three items that are new in the 2024 budget for equity and spending. We have our celebrations and cultural connection events for SCA's 75th anniversary. That's going to be a cost share between our concessionaire tenant marketing fund, marketing fund, and with the airport. Also, we're sponsoring our Open Doors organization and co-hosting Universal Access and Aviation Conference, as well as increasing our engagement with the Airport Minority Advisory Council. Next slide. This chart illustrates kind of our overall spending. So it includes our new equity and spending request for 2024, as well as our existing equity and spending elements. And so for engagement, we see in the green there 650,000 for 2024, supplier diversity 205,000, and removing systemic barriers 163,000, and then community investments 100,000, totaling 1.1 million. Next slide, please. And then this is just illustrating it by year and some detail on those non-recurring investments, on some of the new investments that we added for 2024, and some of our ongoing investments in equity and spending at the airport. Next slide. So with that presentation of all those elements, we wanted to make sure you have some key budget takeaways for the aviation preliminary budget. And so looking at revenues again, only limiting it or increasing it 7.5%. Also, some of the expense components to, to keep in mind. And looking at our financial forecast, some of the targets that we anticipate meeting, and, and being mindful of the budget uncertainties that we are keeping top of mind as we go through, prepare the budget and go into 2024. And with that, next slide, please. That concludes the presentation. Happy to take questions.
Excellent, thank you so much, Heidi. I really appreciate it. We're going to start with Commissioner Hasagawa.
Good morning, Heidi.
Good morning.
Thank you for the presentation. I just have a couple clarifying questions for you. So on slide 32, when you said that you earmarked space for the HR compensation project pending completion, did you calculate that by the number of impacted personnel?
So I will defer to our executive on that question.
Yeah, we, we just have a number there. We're not sure exactly where we land when we complete the work. So it's, it's basically a number that we came up with a similar, a plug to do that, that if it was above or below that, we can adjust to that. And the number was 6 million, I believe, that we plugged in there for that.
That is just, is it like a random earmarked number? How is that number calculated?
It's pretty close because we're still not finished on what the total impact is. But we wanted to have something that's not, that we could adjust to, rather than leaving it blank and knowing, because we didn't have a number. So it's, it's our best guess of what, of what, within a percentage, plus or minus a percentage that we think it's going to.
It might be a follow-up question for Director Gerard, but wondering if we have an estimate of how many personnel might be impacted by the.
That's, Commissioner, thank you. That's, that's what we're working on now. We can report back on that, on the whole process of how we're going.
And then on page, slide 35, just, oh, I'm so sorry. Slide 33. I am so pleased to see that you've earmarked and pulled out for us these commissioner 2024 budget priorities. In particular, continuing the effort to combat human trafficking, to develop a request for proposal for, to continue the effort to establish affordable, quality, accessible childcare for airport workers, and also for hygiene products. The vision was that the hygiene products would be free, including for traveling members of the public. So I'm just wondering about the nomenclature here, hygiene product vending machine? Or is it something that folks will have to pay in order to access? Or is it actually just a dispenser where you push and it comes out?
As, as I understand it, it's a dispenser, not a something that you have to pay.
It is the latter, Commissioner.
Right, okay, I thought so. Thank you so much for that distinction. No further questions, thank you, President Cho.
Excellent, any other questions? Yes, I'm going to go with Ryan first.
Thank you for the presentation. Just a few, few thoughts and questions that I wrote up. So I get this presentation, you know, we received it in advance and I read through it. And my very first thought was, if this were a typical business, everybody would want to get into it. It's incredibly good cash flow coming out of this entity. I mean, just extraordinary when you look at the overall numbers that our net operating income is $360 million. We also have an entity that has a ravenous appetite for capital construction. And so we take all that net cash flow each year, and we immediately put in to building new buildings to, you know, obviously some maintenance projects and refurbishment. But, so it's just an enormous amount of economic activity in this one place. And I think a few things that come out of that is, you know, it is in this next five-year cycle where you show that we're planning to spend $4.9 billion. If we meet all of this, as you point out, our debt service coverage is going to drop significantly from 1.8 to I think 1.5, you said, correct? That's, those numbers are based on us meeting the capital budget targets. What is our record for, you know, if we budget, let's say, a billion dollars for any given year, how frequently do we actually spend about a billion dollars? Or is it normally more than that or normally less than that?
That's a great question. I will.
I'll be glad to jump in. Because Commissioner, I go back to the study, if that's okay?
Of course.
A few years ago, and Lance would be glad to chime in too. Then we did that study of saying over, it may not be perfect with a given year because projects may slide within a given year, but our track record is about, higher than 60%. I'm looking on here. 75. 75% accomplishing it within a five-year period. So that's.
So let's say we stick to that trend of 75%. Then by the time we get to 2028, we won't have spent nearly as much on capital as we had budgeted and quite honestly had hoped to, because we want to be able to spend all this money and get all these projects done. If we don't, our debt service coverage will be significantly lower, wouldn't it be, in that case?
If we spend less.
And our revenues are relatively close to what we anticipate.
Let me, I have my colleague Han, if you want to come speak to this. Han Nguyen, Senior Manager at Aviation Finance. So our plan, the five-year plan, if we don't spend any further projects beyond 2028, then our debt service will increase, so, because we're not paying for the debt. But right now, as the, we have a bigger capital program. And so what you're seeing right now is five-year, but we do have a 10-year program. That's upcoming.
Okay, great. And then the, we're doing great, based on this, you know, the numbers particularly coming out of COVID and we're seeing lots of positive signs here. I want to dig in a little bit to the whole airport ecosystem and ask the question, is it that we're doing well, but our vendors, carriers, et cetera, are not doing well? Or is it that generally, the finances of the airport, its vendors, its carriers, the small businesses, is it generally positive news?
I would say so, generally positive.
I can, I can jump into that. And Kalia is in the room, or Jeff Wolf are there online, they can jump into that. Generally, we are, we are doing good generally. There are some, of course, some vendors that are doing better than others. Many of our tenants though, Commissioner, they face the challenge of not being able to staff their, their business appropriately. So some of them that would like to open longer or to have more seats available, I think some of them are still struggling because they just don't have the staff in hand. But I would say that generally, they're doing really well. And I don't know if Kalia or Jeff Wolf is online to maybe bat me upon that one. But that's a conversation that I've had with Kalia more.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's a particularly important thing for us to think about as we move back in again to the conversation around the next SLA too. It's just a sort of. in again to the conversation around the next SLA, too, is just to sort of understand the health of everyone involved. Last question on the budget itself is, I'm trying to think, you know, as commissioners, we're trying to think long-term. And even in six years here, I really haven't been looking at a budget where capital spend is decreasing, or is relatively minimal, and yet there have been periods in port history when we didn't invest all that much in the airport, either because of a prolonged economic slowdown, or trouble in the aviation industry. And in fact, periods like this are somewhat atypical. We're in the middle of a generation, or even maybe a half-century spend on the airport. It seems to me that, you know, we, I remember one of the earliest presentations on the North and South satellites that I received was about how, you know, these are facilities from the 1970s, no real significant investment has been made in them. And now, over the course of the 10 years, beginning from the North Satellite Project through to when we complete the South Satellite Project, we're going to spend $2 billion on those two facilities, extraordinary amount of money. And we, as you mentioned, we haven't even, we're not even talking about SAMP here, which will be, I mean, if it comes to pass, will be a huge amount of money. And so these kinds of capital campaigns that we're in the midst of right now are really maybe only, they happen once in a generation, or even maybe once in a half-century. And knowing that we're in a constrained footprint, this may be the last big push for expansion of the footprint at CTEC. And so I think for me, it, our efforts to shore up our internal capacity to take on these projects is really, really important. And so, you know, we talked about this, I think, at the last meeting, about the need to have, not just, we sort of centered on engineering, but all of the CPO and audit team, and everyone that needs to come around and make sure that in these billion-dollar budgets, we're managing that money well, and doing those projects in such a way that we're keeping on schedule and budget as best as possible, without a lot of waste or inefficiency. Last question I had is, I just comment. I just want to go back to something that was, we were talking about at the very start of this conversation, and I just want to say to you, Steve, I think the, on slide three, if we could go to slide three. Sorry, it goes way, way back. This diagram of how we make decisions within the organization has been a real point of clarity for me, under your leadership as Executive Director, that it helps us to understand in the organization, who's deciding what, who's deciding the tactics and the details, and who's setting the long-term vision, and essentially the Sentry Agenda goals. And in fact, in 2020, the Commission did update the Sentry Agenda goals. In June of 2020, we updated them with input from multiple people on the dais here today. And so we do own those goals. They are our goals. And I appreciate that, through the delegation of authority, we have given you the authority to make decisions around the tactics and the detail-oriented stuff. And so I think it's a good system. There are times when I, as a Commissioner, want to know some of the details around that stuff, but an example I often think of is, and I'm not trying to brag here, but there was a point in my career where I was an expert on ceramic tile. And my time, my six years at the Port Sale, literally, I was on the Technical Advisory Committee for the National Council that determined where tile could be used. Not once, as a Commissioner, have I ever been asked about ceramic tile, even though we buy a lot of it at the Port Sale, particularly at the airport. And that is perfectly appropriate. If anybody ever wanted to ask, they could, but I'm, I don't think that's my role here. In fact, you know, I think I need to stay much higher level. And so I really appreciate this breakdown of authority, and I'm going to continue to support that method for making decisions at the port.
Thank you. Commissioner Felony.
I still believe it's obviously necessary to show Commission input in this process at a higher level. I'm not talking about practical management issues on a day-to-day basis. There's no word Commission in this structure. We're hired by the public. We hire you. We should be reflected someplace in here. I'll stand behind that. I don't want to get into a debate with Ryan. One of the things I saw that was interesting was that CPE is down for 2024, but CIP peak is in 2025. So I assume the decrease in the CIP, CEP, CPE, it's easy for you to say, is due to the fact that we have these other non-aeronautical revenues going into?
Well, so for CPE, why it's going down is that for those capital projects, while they're in construction, the airlines aren't charged the debt service associated with it until it's completed. So there's a, there's going to be a delay, and you'll see it in the out-years it increases, versus kind of the near-term, 2025, 2026.
Thank you, getting back to that overall five-year look at things. And I'm just wondering, you know, in the course of each one of these projects, there's all these uncertainties, whether labor or whatever, and you say, well, we're doing our best guess. And I appreciate that, and you're the ones that are the position to make the best guess. But it would be interesting to know, when we talk about these uncertainties, whether we're being optimistic, or, you know, pessimistic, or, you know, is the uncertainty of the recession, how heavy is that weighing on you? You know, in terms of just to get a sense of, is this a totally conservative budget? Or are there places where we're really kind of like pushing it? And so I never get that sense in terms of, when you say, we made our best judgment, does that mean that you're bullish or not? You know, so overall, it's important to know, but I'm just wondering, it seems to me in certain areas, there's certain, there's varying levels of uncertainty.
There is, and I will say, just that we have in the appendix section, kind of some of our conservative financial forecast assumptions, right? Looking at, taking a look back, what has the experience have been, and then including a forecast assumption for the look ahead, and also working with our central service partners to inform our assumptions as well. So it's not this kind of arbitrary number that we're dropping in. We are monitoring the economy, the market, and also the industry, what's happening across the nation, to inform our assumptions to be more conservative. Hopefully that.
Overall, it's conservative estimates, and I assume that would be the case, but there are certain places. And the only other thing was, clearly, that we're investing money in SAMP to do some development of ideas, but planning, and you don't think any construction is likely to be going on within the five-year. Because we keep on talking about SAMP is excluded, but it's this, you know, elephant in the closet, or in the room.
It is excluded, and, you know, and that's, the forecast excludes the SAMP near-term project.
So that was just like, one of the things is like, you know, this budget with SAMP, this budget without SAMP, in terms of having some projection of whether, that, what are the uncertainties we're dealing with?
Yeah, what's included, Commissioner, in the budget for SAMP is actually getting through the environmental review process, which is kind of the focus for us right now for SAMP, is to try to get through that process, between now and the end of 2024.
I appreciate that. I was just thinking, like, in the five-year plan, the potential increase in budget for CIP could be significant, even above and beyond what's so significant in front of us. So anyway, I appreciate seeing that, and with regards to the environmental priorities and stuff like that, we'd love to see the SAF goals of the Commission. We made a policy 10%, 10 years. It's a high reach, but we continue to look for staff recommendations for how to continuing to advance that goal. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Hozagala.
The thing about being seven months pregnant is, the bigger you get, the further away your button gets. Thanks for the delay. So I, well, I just wanted to acknowledge that the work that you're doing, budgeting for the airport, is hard work, and it's good work. We have seen through this presentation that the demand for travel at SEA is continuing to grow, and that it has officially outsized pre-pandemic levels, and that this budget demonstrates we're doing as much as we can to be able to accommodate the demand for travel, while balancing that with maximizing the space that we already have, with best practices and sustainability, and balancing the customer experience with evolving needs to being able to promote safety, as well as a culture of inclusion. I think it really is a celebration that, in your words, this is a mostly good news presentation, right? But it also highlights for me, as Commissioner Cockens mentioned, the need to be able to think long-term, and outside of ourselves, we are doing the best we can, given the circumstances. And so just lifting up that all of us have to be thinking regionally about this, and what we're doing to lend our voice towards making sure that growth can occur outside of King County proper. We're doing the best we can, and so I want to commend you on all of that. We look forward to subsequent presentations where, you know, we're going to be talking more about what we're doing for community investments, for sustainability, for resiliency, to promote health and economic opportunities, in the context of the aviation budget exclusively. Yeah, mostly good news, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hozagala. Commissioner Mohammed.
I just have a quick question on slide 33, the Commission 2024 budget priorities for the preconditioned air, that 100,000. That was budgeted in '24, for this year, and it's showing up again on 2024. So I want to know what the status is on that. Did some of those plans and implementation happen this year? Did that get put on pause, and is it moving over to next year? I just want to understand that better.
You might as well have just stayed up here.
I like hearing from you.
Thank you again, Sarah Cox, with Environment Sustainability. With respect to preconditioned air, we have moved forward. We're continuing to conduct assessments on the performance. We have looked at, in partnership with the airlines, different materials that are needed to replace some of the current hoses. And so this is just a continuation. We have completed work this year, and it's just a continuation of the work to implement the program. Some of the items were longer lead times, but we are continuing to move forward and have implemented improvements.
So does that mean in 2024, there'll be additional costs being incurred, or is that?
Yes.
We still have dollars left over from this year?
Additional costs incurred in 2024. We'll be spending our 2023 allocated budget, and then additional in 2024.
That's really helpful. Thank you. Sorry to call you up here a couple times, but I appreciate you. That concludes my questions, and also I want to express gratitude to the entire aviation team. Thank you for the work that you guys do every day.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, one last question, Commissioner Felony.
So I asked about the SAF implementation. So we have ongoing goals. You guys continue to make great work to that end. Can you give us a sense of what is the budget ask you're making for SAF? And it's a high priority for the organization and the communities around us.
Yeah, so in additional, in addition to just our general staff time that we do on integrating with our airline partners, producers, suppliers, and bringing SAF to our region for 2024, we have included our SAF pilot project to bring SAF to SEA. It's helping us understand just the logistics that are needed to do that. So this is a really big milestone for various parts of the SAF industry, to understand what it will take to bring SAF to SEA.
Great. Well, thank you both, Lance and Heidi. If there are no additional questions from Commissioners at this time, Executive Director Metrick, do you have any closing comments before we adjourn our morning session?
Thanks, Commissioners. Thanks for your questions and your feedback on the different programs. I go back to what I said initially, which is, you know, it's kind of like the, from the Tale of Two Cities, the best of times, worst of times. Challenging times, great opportunities for us, but challenges, as we were discussing the SWOT analysis. One thing can be both an opportunity and a threat, and as we look at that, and the team, aviation team, under Managing Director Little's efforts, is really balancing all those things as we go forward. And I do want to say on some things on the, I'll be glad to go back, we laid out the process in 2020, but I'll be glad to go back and lay that process out again, and how we get Commissioner feedback, and how that's fed in. For one example, on, even though they're labeled my priorities, on the ED priorities, just to spend one second on that, because I have 33 priorities, but those aren't my priorities. Those are roll-up ones, that we've established objectives for the institution. I just want to report back to you, as I do semi-annually, then at the end of the year, progress towards those, and those have 75 initiatives rolled up into those. And those are only one slice, as Managing Director Little was saying, he tries to cut his down. I've narrowed those down to my 33 top ones, that I think you need to know about, to report about, the progress across the port. So that's the challenge of getting the information, and then reporting back on that dashboard indicator, that you can see how we're progressing on things, or indication of progress across all of our objectives in a given year. So I'll be glad to provide more information on that, the process, and the thought behind that, and look for any improvements as well as we go forward. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Executive Director Metrick. Let me just conclude with some, you know, comments of my own. I want to express my sincere thanks to you, Heidi, to Lance, and the entire aviation team. As you can imagine, as Commissioners, we get the most feedback about the airport. It's like, it's not even close, honestly. And so for us to be undergoing this very ambitious, and as Commissioner Cockens said, maybe once in a generation, you know, transformation, all eyes are on how we handle this, how we're prudent, and with really taxpayer money, although we like to say that we don't use taxpayer dollars. At the end of the day, it's the taxpayers who pay to go on these flights, and for facilities, even if it's not directly through a levy or a tax. And so I think, you know, being good stewards of taxpayer money is of paramount importance to us. And so I hope, you know, you don't mind all the, you know, very detailed questions that we were asking. It's just stuff that we hear in the community, and our engagement with stakeholders, that we just want to put out there. A lot of the times, it's actually so that the public can hear the answers to the questions that they have, right? And so I really appreciate you all taking that in stride. I'm very, very excited for what's ahead. I love talking about our airport. Maybe I talk about it a little too much, but I brag about our airport all the time, right?
Thank you.
Our recent, yeah, our recent upgrades, the new facilities. I literally have the pictures of Sea Concorde saved on my phone, so I can be like, this is what we're doing, right? It's my diversion tactic. Whenever someone complains about the airport, I'm just like, hey, this is what we're doing, right? And so, in any case, really appreciate the great work. This is really complicated stuff, and I don't think any of us pretend to be experts at the finances around the airport. I learn something every time you guys come up here and give us a presentation. And so thank you for educating us. Any other comments from fellow Commissioners before we adjourn?
I'd like to also express my appreciation and your ability to synthesize all this stuff in this amount of time. And I also just want to clarify that my suggestion about this graphic does not reflect the fact that you don't do this. I mean, I'm saying that it should just be seen in the graphic. Of course, this is an iterative process, and we appreciate working with you on this. It's just, it just says in the document that you're getting input from ELT, and I just think that's not true, and so the graphics should represent that. Thank you.
Commissioner Hozagala.
I'm getting my bathroom remodeled right now. I'm just, I have some questions about tile.
We do have a couple minutes here. I'm just kidding.
That I might charge for.
If anyone cares to know, my first job at high school was to sell women's shoes at Nordstrom, so if you ever need tips on women's shoes. All right. With that, if there are no objections, the meeting is adjourned. Our regular business meeting will commence at noon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was so good. I killed it.